Good evening. Welcome to the November 21st, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, I'd like to remind everyone about our meeting format. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is being held in person and online. Commissioners, Planning Department staff, and members of the public are attending in the Wheat Ridge City Hall and also by way of Zoom platform. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom either on a device or by calling in. A Zoom meeting link and dial-in information can be found on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. In addition to being online via Zoom, we are also broadcasting this meeting on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When there is time for public comment, and there are several public comment periods tonight, those who wish to comment on our Zoom connection use the Raise Your Hand button. If you are dialing in, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute your phone. If you plan to speak online tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to speak, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I am now calling the meeting to order. May I please get a roll call of members?
Jonathan Schelke. Christine Disney.
Here.
Daniel Gravy.
Here.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Here.
Michael Moore.
Here.
Sierra Maciones.
Here.
And Krista Hollab is absent tonight.
The next order on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. The next item is approving the order of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the order of the agenda? All right. Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Next, we'll vote to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes from the November 7th, 2024 meeting? May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented, Madam Chair.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
We will now open the general interest public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you plan to speak on an item that is on tonight's agenda, please wait until we get to those items. And remember, if you're viewing online or through Zoom, to raise your hand or mute your phone. All speakers are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes. Speakers may not donate their time. Is anyone signed up to speak?
No, Madam Chair.
And is there anyone on Zoom?
There are a few people on Zoom. If you are wishing to speak about anything not on the agenda, please raise your hand or unmute with *6. Raising hand, you can do *9. Nobody at this time.
All right. And I'll check one more time. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on any subject not on the agenda? All right, thank you. I will close the public forum. Tonight, we have three public hearings. If you comment during a public hearing tonight, based on our hybrid format, we typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing. However, if you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. I'd like to welcome again any members of the public. It is important that the public hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our hope is that we create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help in this process. I ask that you respect the statements made by city staff, the applicant, and my fellow planning commissioners. Please do not clap, yell, boo, make commentary from the audience, or otherwise disrupt the proceedings. We start all public hearings with a presentation from staff and some cases with a presentation from the applicant. After the presentations, the commission will ask questions of the staff and the applicant. After that, we will invite members of the public to comment as well. I will now open the hearing for case number WZ2407. Commissioner Quinn, will you please introduce the item?
Yes, Madam Chair, but I'd like to bring something to... I just noticed on what's the pink paper here, it's calling for an amendment to Phase 2 to allow camping uses on Lot 2. But then on the, on the, our packet here, it had an amendment to use RV camping uses on Lot 1, or am I reading that incorrectly?
It should be Lot 1, Phase 2.
Okay. Thank you.
It is entirely possible that I typo'd it because it's... The bottom half is Lot 2, Phase 1, so it's very mixed up, so.
No problem.
It should be Lot, Lot 2, Phase.
All right.
Oh God, Lot 1, Phase 2. I'm already messing it up.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to bring forth case number WZ2407, Prospect Park Place, PCD. Approval of an amendment to Phase 2 of the proposed... Or excuse me, of Prospect Park Place ODP to allow RV camping uses on Lot 1.
You got it.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. May I please have the staff report?
Okay, good evening. My name is Elena Olivas Loera, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ2407, which is a request for approval of an amendment to the Prospect Park Place ODP to expand RV campground uses to Phase 2 of the development located at 11600 West 44th Avenue. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, the Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The property is located on the south side of West 44th Avenue, just east of Tabor Street. According to the Jefferson County Assessor, the site is just over six acres in size and currently contains the Applewood RV Resort. There are multiple buildings located on the property currently used for commercial and retail and offices in addition to the RV parking spaces located on the southern portion of the site. The site is zoned planned commercial development under the Prospect Park Place ODP. Adjacent properties to the north are zoned residential 3, commercial 1 to the west, and agricultural 1 to the south and east. Uses in the vicinity include residential, commercial, and parks and open space. I added this slide in, in response to some comments we got and questions. So just for a little bit of background, the site was originally zoned commercial and agricultural and was rezoned to planned residential development in the early 80s to allow for residential uses. The site contained a mobile home park. In the late 80s, the property was rezoned from planned residential development to planned commercial development, which established the RV park campsite as a permitted use on the southern portion of the site. The northern portion remained commercial. The city collects lodgers tax on the RV park and would continue to do so should the use be expanded to the northern portion. In response to a question received ahead of this meeting, the maximum length of stay for RV parks is 90 days by the code. Recently, the city started enforcing on the hospitality extended stay provisions for hotels and motels because it became a problem for health and safety of the residents living at these locations. There has been a disproportionate amount of crime in these areas, and the units are not equipped for long-term stays and are lacking things like kitchens and appropriate sleeping quarters. The city has not enforced on the 90-day stay maximum for the RV park because since 2014, outside of an isolated event, there has not been any indication of the 90-day stay maximum being abused or a disproportionate amount of crime at this location, indicating a problem needing to be addressed. The extended stay enforcement has been a major burden on staff across several departments, but the city felt it was necessary in that case. In this particular case, it is not. The request tonight is for an amendment to the existing ODP. The outlined development plan establishes the zoning and development standards. The purpose of this request is to expand RV campsite uses to Phase 2 of the site on the northern side. Staff advised that a planned development was most appropriate because of the ability to customize the permitted uses and accommodate the unique nature of an RV campsite. The code allows for processing ODPs and SDPs concurrently or sequentially, and the applicant has chosen the sequential two-step option. The outlined development plan establishes the planned commercial development zoning. The proposed amendment is a single page and is attached with the staff report. The standards proposed in this amendment would apply only to Phase 2 on the northern portion. Phase 1 would continue to be governed by the original ODP. The sheet includes certification and signature blocks for the property owners, Planning Commission, City Council, and the mayor. There is also a character of development statement, development standards, and other standard notes, as well as permitted uses and conceptual layout of the property, including access, open space, and phases. The ODP depicts the site broken up into two separate phases. Phase 1 is the southern half of the site. It was originally entitled in 1989, and this phase currently contains RV campsites. No changes are proposed in Phase 1, and it is proposed to remain as is. Phase 2 is the northern half of the site and contains the main entrance onto the site, and it is situated along West 44th Avenue. The existing commercial buildings in the house on the north side of the site are proposed to be demolished, and it would be redeveloped for more RV campsite spaces. One building along the western property line is proposed to remain to be converted for restroom facilities. The applicant submitted a preliminary traffic letter from a traffic engineer with the ODP, which our engineering department reviewed and used to determine if a full traffic study would be required with the future SDP application. The letter stated that with the removal of existing commercial buildings and the addition of the RV parking spaces, the adjacent roadway network would not be negatively impacted, and the overall number of trips would be reduced. This table summarizes the development standards that are proposed in Phase 2 with the amendment. The proposed development standards are a combination of existing standards listed in the original ODP and new standards with the proposed land use in mind. The standards proposed with this amendment will apply only to Phase 2 of the site. The intent for Phase 2 of the site is to use it for RV camping sites, and most of the existing buildings on the northern portion of the site are planned to be demolished. The setbacks proposed are in order to ensure that the building that will remain on the site will be in compliance with the development standards of the ODP. The lot coverage accounts for the existing building that will remain and also provides a small amount of flexibility should a new building be built, though no new buildings are proposed as part of this project at this time. In all other areas, the project is proposed to comply with the zoning code, including lighting, fencing, and signage. This is a zoomed-in and annotated version of the sketch plan within the amendment. The main entrance will remain unchanged to the northeast. Along West 44th Avenue, there will be a substantial 20-foot-wide landscape buffer, which would include a six-foot-tall fence to provide some screening from the street. The proposed areas where the RV spaces would be located are called out in the white areas. One-way paved roads would provide internal circulation around the site. The small building located on the west side is to remain and be converted into restroom facilities, and visitor parking spaces are proposed just in front of that building. The existing RV campsite on the south side will remain. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. A full analysis of the criteria for consideration of the zone change were provided in the staff report. The neighborhood's designation encompasses the site and a majority of surrounding properties in the vicinity. Additionally, the site is located along a neighborhood commercial corridor. The proposed ODP amendment is consistent in addressing the neighborhood revitalization designation where the property is being invested in. The proposed amendment would allow for the site to become cohesive in use, would help facilitate the removal of aging buildings, and increase curb appeal through site improvements and increased landscaping. The proposed use on Phase 2 of the site, which the proposed amendment would enable, would help achieve the goals of the neighborhood commercial corridor designation by providing a mix of diverse uses on the corridor. The ODP reflects allowable uses, development standards, and architectural requirements that help with economic growth, promote quality design, balance compatible land uses, and retain community character. Additionally, by way of improving the site and enabling more cohesion between Phase 1 and Phase 2, the proposal is likely to result in a positive future outcome. The 44th Avenue Subarea Plan, which was adopted in 2003... Sorry, 2023, also supports the request. The plan calls for the area to be residential with a mix of housing types as a priority, as described in Strategy B 2. Strategy D 1 designates this particular property as a potential recreational tourism destination, and this particular goal within the plan would be further supported by the presence of the RV park. In response to additional questions we received ahead of this meeting, the 44th Avenue Subarea Plan included both an extensive traffic analysis and crime analysis for the 44th Avenue corridor. The traffic analysis determined the need for a new signal and pedestrian crosswalk at 44th and Tabor, which are on the 2J list and will be installed. The crime analysis did not identify this site as being in the top five for crime or safety concerns between the years 2014 and 2022. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on November 1st, 2023 via Zoom. Two members of the public attended the meeting. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies on the ODP amendment. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners and residents within a 1,000-foot radius. Staff received one comment from members of the public on Wheat Ridge Speaks prior to this hearing. Staff believes the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a compatible and balanced land use. It complies with the comprehensive and 44th Subarea Plans, and it promotes economic growth and quality design. All agencies can serve the property, and the proposal is in line with the criteria for an amendment to the ODP. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. If City Council approves the ODP, the amendment is approved, and the applicant can move forward with a specific development plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation?
They do not.
All right. I will now open the hearing for public comment. Those who wish to comment on Zoom, use the Raise Your Hand button. If you're dialing in, press *9 to raise your hand and *6 to unmute your phone. When you come to the podium, please give your name, spell your last name, and share your address. And please make sure that when you speak, you're talking into the microphone and it's on. Makes it easier for people on Zoom to hear what you're saying. Has anyone signed up to speak? With Brent Davis, please come forward.
Hello, my name is Brent Davis. That's D-A-V-I-S. I am a Wheat Ridge resident.
Can I get your address, please?
Oh yeah, I live at 3940 Balsam Street in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
I'm here to address some of the issues I read in a letter, I think on a Wheat Ridge Neighborhood Facebook page, that were some points allegedly against the expansion of this RV park. I'm a retired school teacher, and I am a very longtime RV-er. I've literally traveled and stayed in RV parks all over the United States. One point in this letter was that this RV park might be considered affordable housing. And some RV parks in some places might qualify as affordable housing. But I stayed in this RV park for a total of two months a couple of years ago, and I assure you, this is not affordable housing. I think my lot rent was $1,300 a month. And then I paid in addition... I was metered for electricity, and I had to pay, of course, for propane for my use in heating and cooking and so forth. So it really was not a cheap endeavor at all. And speaking of propane, this letter also made a point that maybe handling propane tanks was dangerous and subject to fire hazard. I've literally changed propane tanks on RVs dozens of times with absolutely zero mishaps in spite of my probably breaking every safety rule available. And I would rate the risk of a fire from handling RV propane tanks equal to the risk you might encounter changing the tank on your gas grill. This RV park while I was there was well-kept. It was quiet. There was no disruption of any kind. The management was responsive to any of my needs, questions, and so forth. So I don't see any problem with that. There's, I think it's safe to say in the last few years, there's been a very significant increase in demand for RV sites all over the United States. And this is obviously in response to that increase in demand, which I think we tend to encourage that kind of behavior in our society. So I think it's these people just trying to meet demand and upgrade their business. And RVers definitely spend money. I buy groceries. I go to restaurants. I have many times had my truck repaired or serviced while traveling. I pay for entertainment. So I spend money while RVing, just like local residents would spend money. So I speak out generally in favor of this expansion. Thanks a lot.
Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak?
There are a few people on Zoom. It looks like I have one person raising their hand. Couple. Oh, give me a quick second. Okay, Constance iPad, you can now speak. If you can give your first spelling of your last name and address. Constance, can you hear us? I asked her to unmute.
Constance, it looks like you're muted.
Okay, Constance, I'm gonna come back to you. If we can have Lisa Erdle, please give your spelling of your last name and your address, please. Can you hear me? Yes, now we can. Sorry, this is Lisa Erdle, E-R-T-L-E. I live at 11649 West 44th Avenue, across the street directly from the park, the house and the yarn shop that will be demolished. I've lived here since these were built for four years. I have a lot of concerns. My biggest concern is safety. There's been incidents that have happened over there in the past couple of years that involved the Wheat Ridge police officers, homeless, a lot of noise. Just didn't feel safe. But thankfully for the officers, they did take care of some things. I'm sure you all are very aware of the officer who was stabbed over there. That's my biggest concern. My other concerns are just the amount of noise that already I can hear happening from RVs pulling in and out all through the night. The RVs hooking up, opening and shutting doors, music, dogs barking. I face directly that direction. I'm just having a hard time understanding how it's going to retain community character and be visually appealing with a six-foot fence. I don't believe that's going to be very helpful for noise especially. I just think it'll bring down the value of our homes over here. I know several residents over here we've discussed, and we're kind of all in agreement with some things that I've stated. So I guess that's... So I guess that's mostly what I wanted to, to let you know that I'm thinking about.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next, I have Kyle Wagner. If you would like to unmute. Looks like you're unmuted. Can you speak, please?
There we are. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes. Can I get your first and last name and the spelling of your last name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Kylie Wagner, W-A-G-N-E-R. My address is 11647 West 44th. I'm actually Mrs. Erdle's neighbor. And I guess I came to present some of my similar concerns with the development proposed. I do want to thank Mr. Davis for his points, providing some perspective that I have previously been unaware of, having never used that RV park, not really knowing the conditions. I guess I, my biggest concerns as a resident also facing that direction would be, like Lisa brought up, the curb appeal and that large dividing wall. I feel like would not only be visually unappealing, but for our little section of development here, I feel like it would kind of isolate the neighborhood instead of creating a more cohesive community, which I think we're all kind of trying to build here. And I think the RV park, RV park as is, is really valuable to our economy here, and it is valuable to the parks. And as is, I believe it is perfect in size. I do believe expanding it and removing that more diversified commercial space would be more detrimental to, again, a more, a more connected community that, again, I think we are all trying, trying to build, especially with this, the redevelopment plan that Wheat Ridge is, is building altogether. So I guess along with that, the, I'm concerned about the environmental impact that an expansion of asphalt would have on the open space as well. Like if we're trying to align with a more green and environmentally friendly development, I don't think increasing car traffic and asphalt usage is really aligning with those, those ideals. And my final thought is also with them, with the RV lot, managing it, managing that space remotely, I worry about the kind of traffic and other, I guess, kind of foot traffic that that would promote, especially having an open public rest, like a restroom there. I feel like if the crime rate is currently low, having open restrooms, remote management, and a walled-off space would increase crime and just negative kind of side effects. So those are my points I wanted to bring to, to the hearing.
Thank you, Kylie. Currently, I'm seeing no more raised hands online.
Did you say there were no more?
No more.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant like to address any comments made by the public? If you do, would please come forward to the podium. Who's John?
John, if you would like to unmute, if you want to address any.
Hi, my name's Sean Douglas. Can you hear me?
Can I get the spelling of your last name and address, please?
D-O-U-G-L-A-S. And my address is actually 1400 East Charles Road in Marion, Indiana. I am actually the general contractor that will be working on this project.
Would you like to address any of the concerns addressed by the?
I'm sorry, go ahead. There's a delay.
You go ahead.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, thank you and the commission members and everybody. I appreciate your opportunity. Let us look at this and this proposal and follow through the process here. And I would like to address a couple of things. One, I appreciate the, the public coming forward and mentioning a few items and a couple of that I'd like to address. Was it Ms. Wagner, the last speaker? Was that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and she talked about some of the things that was going on with the redevelopment and stuff. And I believe everything that we have proposed through the ODP here has actually fit well with inside the master plan for that whole area there. So we're pretty excited about that, that we're actually working with the community and things on that. And then the traffic study actually showed less traffic that was presented earlier than what was mentioned about maybe increasing traffic flow and things like that. But the actual traffic study that was done, the preliminary, shows that it would be less. So we have addressed that and we're happy with that. There is onsite management future. Don't know if there's going to be a remote act, management to that, but onsite management is currently the standard that we have there. And the restrooms that were discussed, those are all coded. Those are not open to the public. You actually have to have a code to get into those restrooms. So as far as homeless or, or crime and things like that, that wouldn't be helping that situation at all because you have to have access to those. So a couple of small details, but they are important, obviously, to the members across the public, across the street there. I just wanted to address those real quick. I have nothing further on that, though. I do appreciate you guys letting us present this, though.
Thank you. I'll now entertain questions from the commissioners. I'll start to my right, Commissioner Gravy.
Did we want to allow, do we want to try to let Constance, Constance provide any input or? But there was one more that was having audio and she still has her hand raised on there.
Tammy, there appears to be another.
We can try again to see if Constance is able to speak. Your hand is raised.
She's muted.
Yeah. She's unmuted. Constance, can you say anything? See if we can hear you?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes. Can you please give your first name, last name, with spelling and address?
Yes, Dave Nosler, 11691 West 45th Place.
Sorry, can I ask you to repeat that and speak a little bit louder?
I'm sorry. Dave Nosler, N-O-S-L-E-R, 11691 West 45th Place in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you.
And I am the person that submitted an advanced comment this week. And I raised the points about, I raised in my mind, two major points. And one was the traffic. What I, what we haven't heard is how many, and it may have been in the, in the documents provided by the applicant, but haven't heard how many existing camping sites there are in Phase 1 and how many are planned in Phase 2. And in terms of traffic, the major point I was making is we have a single ingress and egress road out of this, out of the RV park. And in my mind, it's, when it's used as, in my observations, it's used every morning and every evening at rush hour because a lot of the spaces are used by contractors and people that are working in the area. And cars that try to exit westbound to get onto I-70 have to cross the double yellow line. And they have to cross essentially three lanes of traffic to make that happen. And we've only got one exit out of this park. And so the question is, how many potential cars lining up to leave this area? And are they all going to be illegally making left-hand turns? And heading west? Or are they traveling east legally to make a left-hand turn and doing U-turns in the commercial lots adjacent or down the street? Or the next, the next access to I-70 is driving approximately a mile down the road to get there? We've observed many trying to make and, and sitting there waiting for traffic to go by. It's a short light on the I-70 entrance, man. For traffic traveling down, especially during rush hours, that they'll have to sit there and wait for the ability to make a left-hand turn. So the question is, how many are we opening this up to the potential of people lining up to come out of that one exit? Secondly, I raised safety concerns and particularly with that one ingress and egress and not knowing the total number of potential people that would, in an emergency, be trying to exit at the same time that emergency vehicles are coming in. I wonder if the traffic study, I can't understand how a traffic study would say that we have, it would result in less threat by adding more potential people that want to exit or enter. Actually, if they're, if they're heading west and trying to exit or enter into the RV park, they're crossing a double yellow line. There doesn't seem to be enough width in the plan to either have an acceleration lane heading east or to allow for a center turn lane slash acceleration lane heading west. And on this, so that's the safety issue with only one ingress and egress area is if emergency vehicles wanted to come through. And secondly, on, with regard to safety and inspection, I have a, I recently built a structure in Brand County, and I have a 400-pound tank. And I was required to bury, there are several existing 100-pound tanks sitting outside of some of these RVs. And the reason that we bury our tanks up in the hills now is because of wildfire fires that have occurred in the past. These large exposed tanks explode and sometimes take off like a rock.
Mr. Nosler?
Yes.
In the essence of time management, we have a long agenda tonight. Could you please conclude your comments?
Well, that's, that's, thank you. And that's my conclusion. You've got my written comments. And as I say, we live across the street. We observe what's going on with the existing. And if the plan is to double the number of available campsites, then I'm saying that you're doubling the potential traffic problems and safety problems. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Gravy.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. Did I hear that the commercial building that exists now, it's like an auto shop? Is that what someone mentioned? Do we know the, the nature of the existing commercial building and it's in full function? And I mean, it seems like that's probably the justification for the traffic study is that the commercial activity now is going to, it's going to be compensated from the lack of the commercial traffic for the demolished building? So is that, is that the case? It's an active kind of auto business right now?
I, I don't believe that. It's like auto repair. I believe it's commercial retail uses.
Okay, so it's like offices or something?
No, not offices specifically, like retail, like there's a yarn shop.
Okay, okay. I thought I heard a couple of public comment. Because that, that would, I guess, there seems to be a little misunderstanding about the nature of the traffic study. I was just curious if we knew how much traffic is associated with the current commercial activity? Because that's what seemed to be the case.
Is the applicant's engineer available? Would you please come up to the podium, state your name, spell your last name and your address for the record? Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? All right, my name is David Theisen, last name spelled T-H-E-I-S-E-N. I live at 1226 Race Street, Denver, Colorado 80206. If you, if we looked at the traffic report, I could probably go into more details. But yes, the, they took into account the commercial property is all going away. So there's so much traffic generated by it, so that was taken away. And then they added in the number of units that are being added to figure out the net change in the amount of cars that will be going in and out of the site. So the commercial actually generates more than the, the additional RV. I think you guys saw that earlier, how it showed a net negative.
Yeah, I did see that. We, we don't have that image in our printed materials, so I just was clarifying. So yeah, thank you for, for confirming that. The other quick question I had for staff is, I guess, did you have anything else that you wanted to share on that? Okay, yeah, thank you. We might be, I don't know, maybe. I, I guess this was, I was a little, you know, this is an interesting one just because I was unaware of the nature of this, this business right there. Having driven by it's interesting. I guess that's part of what we get to do here is be exposed to things in town. Are, does Wheat Ridge have any other like camping areas that are designated like this kind of use, or is this the only one?
Nope, this is the only one. It's a unique animal.
Yeah. That, that thing's happened, you know, when they're kind of longstanding. The only other question I had for staff is related to the comment by the, the last public comment we heard. Has, did staff, has staff ever considered the challenges with the access in and out? And if, in fact, really the only legal way to enter or exit this property is to come in from the west or leave to the east? Is that the case?
We haven't looked in detail at it yet since we're still at the zoning phase. If it does get approved, then they'll come in for the SDP, at which point engineering would review, engineering and public works would review that. They'd review the traffic, public works would review curb cuts, all that good stuff during that time. And yes, fire, fire department was also on this referral list for this review. So fire department also, they didn't have any comments on the ODP. So they'll get referred for the SDP to look at the specific plans for that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Quinones.
I appreciate the questions, Commissioner Gravy, because my, the safety concerns right with fire was, was part of the questions that I had. The other question that I, I heard it being referred to, but I, I'm not very clear. We're just expanding, correct? We're not really changing the, the timeframe where people can actually stay. So we're still looking at 90 days maximum.
Correct, yeah. Yep. So the, the only thing we're talking about is expanding the use from the south to the north portion is really what we're talking about.
All right, perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Kerns.
Is this property hosting temporary residents or are the residents more on a permanent basis?
I'm not sure.
According to some of the comments I read, I'm hearing about things like winter insulation around these RVs. And it seems like this property is actually being used as affordable housing, not necessarily a temporary camping use. Is, who, who's enforcing this? Who's enforcing the 90-day?
We'll let the owner respond to that. Um, the owner is in, the owner or operator is in charge of enforcing that. And we have not, for the record, we have not received any indication that that has not been being enforced. Um, but it is a year-round campground.
And then how do we see the traffic study? I don't, I don't see it.
I'm sorry, I did not include it. That was my mistake. I did not include it in the staff report. So.
Is the property owner paying a traffic impact fee to cover the additional trips? Put on the, and I know he's saying it's negative trips, but you're putting in 40 more RVs at 10 trips, around 10 trips per unit. I don't, and I haven't seen the traffic study yet. So this is, um, I don't know, I have questions.
We, to be clear, we have a traffic letter, not a traffic study.
Traffic letter. Is that because we're not generating enough trips?
No, it has nothing to do with that. It's, it's a trip generation letter that Mr. Theisen can speak to more. But, um, at this point, you're considering the rezoning, not, not the site layout.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind.
Okay. Yeah, I have, I have some questions. How many trips are you proposing per unit for these, for per new RV unit per day?
I, I would have to pull up the traffic study and look at it.
But we don't have the traffic study here?
Let, let me see if I could share my screen again and pull that slide up.
Also, a single egress for how many units are we talking about total? After, after the expansion, we're talking about how many units for this entire site? Do we know?
Uh, I, I, the ODP was, did we have the number exactly on there? Was it 30 or 32?
I don't know how many existing spaces there are, but they're proposing 32 new spaces.
So 32 new spaces?
But they're eliminating all the square footage of commercial.
So that commercial accesses 44th directly. The commercial isn't necessarily part of the egress, is it? It's, it has its own access onto 44th?
Yeah, but they're all right next to each other.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's not like it's a mile of road. It's, you know, all the same frontage.
Just to answer your question, well, based on some research I did, there's currently 51 pads.
51 pads.
In Phase 2.
Oh, in Phase 2. Okay. All right, 51 plus 38.
Thank you. I couldn't remember what that number was.
All right, so we're talking about 89 units total. Times around 10 trips a day. That's 890 trips a day. I mean, that's, to me, that's significant. And out of one egress, this, I have an issue with this being on one egress inside of a flood zone. To me, emergency access for this kind of, this kind of place, generating almost 1,000 trips a day, should probably have two, two driveways or at least an emergency.
Can I remind, can I remind council that we are just looking at the zoning and not the site plan? The SDP will come before you at a later date and it will be determined if we need a full traffic study at that time.
My issue is that I don't think this is fully cooked. And we haven't seen the traffic study or the traffic letter.
I'm working on pulling it up right now.
It was up earlier. She'll pull it up again and we can talk through it.
That's all I have for now, thank you.
You don't want that, okay.
Commissioner Shelkey.
Yeah, I had a question about, and maybe it's my understanding on the 90 days. So, did I hear that right? That the stay is 90 days? But we're not sure who enforces that, right?
The owner and operator or manager of the park would be enforcing that.
And I, did I hear the statement too though? So it's 90 days, but if there was a problem?
No, that's it, not correct.
Okay. Cause I think that gets to the kind of the concern, is this really temporary for camping? Or is this permanent housing?
Do we have the, it's, it's technically an RV park, which the, the timeline on that is a maximum of a 90-day stay. I would like the, is the operator or manager with us online? Or is there someone from the applicant's team that can address this? He is. He is. John, can you unmute and possibly answer the question?
So the question is really, do people stay longer than the 90 days?
John, you can speak if you need to.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, are you still there?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you answer the question?
Yes, I'm trying. I'm, I'm not sure if I'm coming through all the way. These are RV parks. Sometimes people travel for their pleasures. Sometimes people are working on contracts. So we've had people stay at some of these RV parks before that, let's say a nurse comes in for a contract at a hospital and they have a 13-week contract. They may extend to, because they like their assignment. Let's face it, sometimes the money's really well, really good. And they stay and they may do another contract. So there are situations where someone may come in and be there for four months. What's, what's that, 120 days, maybe five months? Only because they extended a contract because they're travelers. We have that quite, we have that all over the country, actually. So there, is there a situation where someone may stay longer? Yes, but it's an approved thing with the site. So it's not like we're having, um, you know, however many lots we talked about or spaces there that we talk about, 80-some spaces that people are going to come in and just stay. That's not the situation. This is an actual RV park. They come, they, they pass through, they may stay a few nights to a couple of weeks. And then they move on and they go wherever they're going. I don't know if that answers that question, but.
Yeah, I, that, that answers it, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, thank you.
Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and thanks, Elena, for getting us through this. So we are here tonight to, to approve the amendment to the ODP to allow an RV park. Is that correct?
I would say it's more accurate to say it would be to expand the RV park.
Okay.
The RV park is already a permitted use on the southern half. So the amendment would be to expand the use up to the northern half.
Okay, so at a 30,000-foot, our job tonight is to consider letting that happen. And then at a future time, this site, the specific development plan will come before us where then we can debate the entrance and exit and the traffic. And if we're going to put a median in and so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a question to staff. There was a note here, a change of character in the area has occurred or is occurring to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment of the area or to recognize the change of character in the area. The staff conclusion was that it was not applicable. I, I wanted to ask if we've considered the 40 townhomes that were built across the street four years ago? The current 24 that are under construction? Along with the efforts to revitalize the park and the lakes? I feel that, I guess the reason I ask is I do feel that it is applicable.
It could be, so that's referring to one of the criteria for the zone change request. And generally, that would be, something would meet the cri, that particular criteria would necessitate the zone change. So I don't think that particular criteria is why we're requesting this particular amendment, which is why we marked it as not applicable. Say, I don't know, say there was a bunch of agricultural land and somebody wanted to rezone for residential because we need more housing units. That criteria might be applicable because the character of the area would be changing where more housing units would be appropriate there. So that criteria might apply in that scenario, but I don't think it applies for this particular scenario.
Thank you so much for that.
Yeah.
Mr. Douglas, I see your hand is up. Did you have a comment?
No, thank you, sorry.
That's all right. Any more questions from the commissioners? All right, I will now close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, thanks, Elena and staff for your report. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ24-07, a request for approval of an ODP amendment to Phase 2 of the proposed Park Place ODP located at 11,600 West 44th Avenue for the following reasons. The proposed zone change will promote public health, safety or welfare of the community and does not result in an adverse effect on the surrounding area. The proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning density and land use are consistent with the intent of a planned development compatible with the surrounding land uses and will result in a higher quality development. The infrastructure in the area can support the development. The criteria used to evaluate zone change supports the request.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
I do. I don't think we're calling this what it is. If this is truly acting like affordable housing, we should call it an affordable housing development. It doesn't seem like this is being, this seems like it's actually Wheat Ridge workforce housing. The people that are staying here are actually using it to commute to work and back. I don't see any indication that people are actually leaving this place. I also saw the traffic letter and it's for 30 units, not the actual 89 units. So it's, I think the traffic letter needs to be redone. The single egress also brings up questions in my mind in terms of emergency access. And yes, um, we can get to that in the site development process. But this, this study, this study, the, the development, the rezoning, it's not fully thought through yet for this many people living here, even if it is temporary. There, there should be two, uh, two driveways, two, two egresses, especially in a flood zone. And so I, I'll be voting no on this. Thanks.
Any other comments? Um, I have a comment. Did you want to go, Commissioner Quinn?
Oh, um, yeah, Madam Chair, I just, so my industry in my line of work in construction and electrical trade, we have had several, we call them tramps. Guys will, the people will come in, move their whole families in, chasing power line work, inside electric work, plumbing, things of that nature, a lot of construction type of guys. And our area here is booming construction-wise. And a lot of folks come in, in RVs, set up camp. And some of these job sites, they do last more than a year. So they would not, you know, so that's where we get where these guys wouldn't stay. And I use guys lucratively. People will stay more than 90 days. I've had a guy's camp on the driveway for a year, building transmission lines. And, and so I think, and I, and I respect everyone's opinion and worried about the access egress and traffic counts. And I think we have room to look at that and make some changes when we get to the site development plan. But as an overall high rate, these folks will come in and it's like they're living here. So they add to the, to our economy. Going across the street to the beer joint, having a few, um, God knows, construction guys do that. And I, I just, um, I think we have room to make some adjustments in the SDP. But at the level that we're at tonight, um, I can support this. There might need to be some adjustments made in the SDP, but I think, um, I think we can get there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I visited the RV park and spoke to the management and looked at the site where they're going to expand. I asked them about the affordable housing and they said absolutely not. The current rent for the pad is $1,500 a month. On top of that, you pay for electricity and a sewer hookup. And you have to leave a $300 deposit if you're planning on staying longer than a few nights. Of the 51 sites currently, about 60% are occupied by people who are staying longer than a few nights. Of those people, the majority are, as Commissioner Quinn said, gig workers. Basically, they're construction workers or traveling nurses. And, um, the management that I spoke to lives on site. I talked to the maintenance manager, asked him about the concerns with the propane tanks. He said he and his wife choose to live in RV parks. That's how they like to live. They've managed several. It's almost unheard of to have a fire from a propane tank. And as, uh, Mr. Davis mentioned, who has lived in a lot of RV parks, I know because I know him very well. It would be about the same danger as you changing the propane on your grill. If it was that bad, I don't think they would allow propane tanks in the RV parks. I have stayed in a lot of RV parks and it's standard procedure to have one driveway in and out because that helps with security. It also keeps people from sneaking in and out. So that's a pretty standard thing. I do agree that the traffic in that part of town is horrific. CDOT did Wheat Ridge no favors in reconfiguring the excess entrance and exit ramps onto I-70. How many people here have ever gone to Edwards Meats and tried to figure out how to turn into their parking lot? It's impossible because you're turning into, it's a nightmare. So I don't think we can blame the RV park for the bad traffic. I understand the concerns of the citizens who live across the street. They might not like the appearance. But the thing about an RV park is it's going to change every day. There's people coming and going all the time. Back to the affordable housing, that, in that amount of rent that they're paying falls in line with the AMI of people earning between 70 and $150,000 a month. So you're going to have a higher quality of resident in this RV park. The RV that Mr. Davis owns, brand-new, costs $75,000. So it's not an inexpensive proposition for someone to live in an RV park. And for what we're looking at tonight, the other thing, too, is this RV park is a business. They pay lodging tax. They give money to the city to exist, and they've been there since 1989. I didn't even know it was there. It, it's pretty obscure now. It is behind the buildings that are going to be demolished, but there's going to be a 20-foot buffer zone with landscaping and a fence. So I, I don't think that it's going to change the character of the neighborhood. If we're concerned about that, we might want to ask the Falcon Bookstore to move or the truck stop. That's a pretty rough part of town. So I, I don't see that this as, as an issue. And I will be voting in support. Are there any other comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I think for the phase that we are at for now, I think there, Commissioner Kearns, you're right. I think that there's a little bit more to work on. I do believe that, I also spent two different events visiting the site because I was unaware that it was even there. Walked the neighborhood, both down Tabor to the lake, over to the new developments. I think for the phase that we're at right now, I, I think it does meet all of the criteria.
If there are no more comments, commissioners, please vote. Motion approved, six to zero.
Sorry, six to one.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is case number WZ 24-01. And I believe Commissioner, who's reading it?
Yeah, I'll read it. I'm reading it.
Kearns. Thank you.
Okay, this is case number WZ 24-01, Clear Creek Crossing ODP Amendment. This is a request for an approval of an amendment to the underlying zoning to revise uses and standards impacting Planning Areas 3 and 6 at Clear Creek Crossing. Property is owned Planned Mixed Use Development, PMUD, and more specifically is subject to the Clear Creek Crossing outlined Development Plan, ODP, and Design Pattern Book, which was approved by the city in 2018, case number WZ 16-07. The applicant is requesting to amend the ODP specifically for Planning Areas 3 and 6 and to make necessary and conforming revisions to the Design Pattern Book.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. I will now open the hearing for public comments. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No one in the room.
Do we have anyone on Zoom?
There are a couple people on Zoom. If you'd wish to speak, please raise your hand. Nobody at this time.
All right. I did that a little bit backwards. We need the staff report first. My apologies.
Ready for me? Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. I'm Stephanie Stevens, planner in the Community Development Department at the City of Wheat Ridge, presenting case number WZ 24-01, which is a request for approval of an amendment to the underlying zoning to revise uses and standards in Planning Areas 3 and 6 at Clear Creek Crossing. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the City of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. So the subject property is commonly known as Clear Creek Crossing. It's located west of Interstate 70 and south of Highway 58. Properties surrounding Clear Creek Crossing have a variety of land uses and zoning designations. To the north is Clear Creek Trail. To the northwest are the Coors Water Storage Facilities, the Applewood Golf Course, and a large lot, single-family residential neighborhood are located to the west and southwest, which is technically unincorporated Jefferson County. Directly south of the property, land uses are more highway-oriented and include a gas station, hotel, and restaurants. That's considered the I-70 West Business Center. Interstate 70 abuts the property to the east, and across I-70 to the east is the Applewood Village Shopping Center with retail uses. The applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning impacting the planning areas on the screen. They're considered 3 and 6. So the zoning of the property is planned mixed-use development, and most surrounding properties, within the Wheat Ridge boundary anyway, are planned commercial development with some residential 1 and commercial 1 zoning over across I-70. So I want to give you some context. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can, but as you see, it's an extensive staff report, which warrants some elaboration. So the approved zoning documents organize the subject site into eight planning areas, each with different permitted uses and development standards. The master developer, Evergreen DevCo, has worked to develop the site and identify tenants for each planning area. And to give you some context, I'll walk you through each of the planning areas with current and planned uses. Planning Area 1 is reserved for employment uses, and that's where the new hospital just went in. Planning Area 2 is reserved for multi-unit, and that is where apartments were built a few years ago now. And as for the subject, Planning Area 3, the zoning envisioned in this area was a walkable commercial area to include a mix of retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses across several buildings. And with this amendment, Evergreen is proposing to relocate the pedestrian-oriented restaurant and entertainment district over to the west side in Planning Area 6. The planning area is currently vacant, Planning Area 3, anyway, is currently vacant with SDP's in for review for a Home 2 Hotel, which you'll review later tonight, a Bird Call Drive-Thru Restaurant and Bank of America. Crossing Drive is planned to intersect the planning area and be constructed concurrently with the development of these active applications. Planning Area 4 was envisioned to more highway, highway or auto-oriented, and we have Foothills Credit Union, Dutch Brothers Coffee Shop, and the Maverick, or previously Come and Go Gas Station on the south end. Planning Area 5, 6, and 7 on the west side were envisioned to have larger-format land uses, such as larger retailer users, entertainment uses, and hotels. So right now, we have the Lifetime Facility there, as well as a Hampton Inn Hotel that's under construction, though, so they fit kind of that larger-format entertainment use category. And then we have SDP's in for review now for a Primrose School, a Bonfire Burritos Drive-Thru Restaurant, also in Planning Area 6. So then there's also one SDP in for review for what they're calling the Lookout, which is a restaurant corridor for this on the west side of the planning area. And it includes three buildings surrounded by a quarter-acre park and plaza. And this amendment would allow that lookout area to become the premier pedestrian-oriented restaurant and entertainment space in Clear Creek Crossing. A trail connection along the west side is currently under construction and will complete the gap from 32nd Avenue to Clear Creek. And then Planning Area 8, all the way up north, includes the regional drainage facilities and will remain as open space. Rezoning to a planned development in the City of Wheat Ridge involves the two-step process. And for the subject property, the 2018 approval of the outlined Development Plan, or ODP, and Design Pattern Book comprise the first step. These two regulatory documents establish the allowed uses and development standards for the property and establish access considerations and configurations for vehicles, pedestrians, bikes, transit, et cetera. The second step for development in a planned mixed-use development requires approval of a specific development plan for each building, lot, or phase, and several SDPs have already been approved in Clear Creek Crossing. The subject request is to amend that 2018 Step 1 in the ODP. The request tonight is for, to modify the underlying zoning to revise allowed uses, setbacks, or build 2, street, plaza, and multimodal requirements impacting Planning Areas 3 and 6, with the intent of relocating that main restaurant and entertainment space from Planning Area 3 to Planning Area 6, and in turn, creating a premier pedestrian corridor, or what we've been calling a paseo, to connect users from West 40th Avenue to and through these planning areas. Now, I'll walk you through some of this on the screen in more detail. So the ODP itself, this is a couple of screenshots from that. Drive-throughs are currently allowed in Planning Areas 1 through 7 without a limit on the quantity, so, but they have to be attached to multi-tenant buildings in this Planning Area 3. So the applicant is requesting to allow freestanding buildings with a drive-through in Planning Area 3 in exchange for limiting the number to a maximum of three in any single planning area and a maximum of five between these two planning areas, 3 and 6. The sketch plan also in the outlined Development Plan is just revised to show that that pedestrian connection is going to be required. So the Design Pattern Book, which made your packet 150 pages long, contains those substantive design standards. It is pretty unique to Wheat Ridge for us to have one of these, but it is in-depth and complex. It explains the site design, building architecture, landscaping, lighting, and signage for each area in Clear Creek Crossing. And the key changes proposed tonight are to the purpose and standards of those two planning areas, 3 and 6, the addition of the Crossing Drive paseo, including street sections and standards for that drive, expanding multimodal requirements and revisions to plaza and gathering area requirements. And then subordinate cleanup changes include the request to absolve the Architectural Control Committee, adding references to the Lutheran Master Sign Plan in the signage standards, and revising lighting requirements. So starting with Planning Area 3 and 6 actual standards, so Build 2s are what Clear Creek Crossing has primarily for this Planning Area 3 right now, meant to push the buildings closer to the streets to enhance that pedestrian realm. So because the primary pedestrian corridor is proposed to be kind of relocated over to that west side, they're reassessing the Build 2s along with it. And with this proposal, the Clear Creek Drive Build 2 in Planning Area 3 would only apply to a portion of the planning area instead of the whole kind of west side, including, and right now it applies to the entire frontage of the roadway. This would allow the corner lot at Clear Creek Drive and 40th Avenue to contain a single building fronted on West 40th Avenue in lieu of the original anticipation for multiple buildings that kind of hug both streets. So this would impact the Home 2 Hotel site that you'll be seeing a little bit later on. Also, currently, no parking is allowed at the hard corner of that intersection within 50 feet of the intersection, and the applicant is proposing to allow parking here but add requirements for screening and pedestrian connections into the sites. Plaza space will still be required in this planning area and is proposed at the corners with the Home 2 SDP that you'll see in a few minutes. The West 40th Avenue Build 2 currently requires 30% of the buildings along this frontage to be within 20 feet of that property line. And the proposal now is to allow buildings to be a little bit further away, but increasing how much of that frontage needs to contain a building. This would help accommodate grade changes that, at the time of the ODP, were not kind of considered, and then drive-through uses would be further accommodated by allowing vehicular and fire access lanes to surround those buildings on all sides. In Planning Area 6, they're just updating signage, plaza, and public art standards, but I'll go through in a few moments. So when the applicant came to us and proposed moving the restaurant district to the west side of Clear Creek Crossing, staff made the determination that, well, we got to get people over there, so there needs to be an enhanced pedestrian connection between the hospital and the restaurant district. So to that end and to increase visibility and create a comfortable pedestrian connection, the applicant is proposing the enhanced Crossing Drive to prioritize pedestrians through these planning areas and create a unique sense of place. The illustration on the screen is in your packet and shows Crossing Drive and how it will relate to those adjacent sites, future and planned. Crossing Drive will be required to provide a raised intersection and enhanced crossings, varied paving types to differentiate the roadway from sidewalks, from crossings, from intersections, a minimum of a 12-foot-wide pedestrian walkway on the west side for the entire length of the paseo, with a hardscaped amenity zone for the portion north of Clear Creek Drive, so in that Planning Area 3 portion. A minimum six-foot detached walk and six-foot tree lawn would be required on the east side for the entirety of the paseo, an overhead gateway feature at the Lookout Restaurant Corridor interest to really catch your eye all the way from 40th Avenue, overhead string lighting, street trees lighting, and amenities such as benches. And then private development will be encouraged to integrate with the paseo by providing adjacent patio space and amenities and minimize the view of parking adjacent to the streets. This slide shows the section northeast of Clear Creek Drive. And this slide visualizes the raised intersection where individual sites will gain access. So it's looking to the south from basically 40th Avenue, a little bit into it. This is the southwest, southwest section and main entry into the Lookout Restaurant Corridor, kind of illustrating that overhead lighting. You guys just saw the Primrose application came before you. This is kind of the view looking south from that site. Multimodal requirements have also been expanded upon to reflect the ongoing partnership between the city, RTD, and the developer, with the goal of accommodating bus service and transfer station at Clear Creek Crossing. So a bus stop was recently added to the hospital site, shown on kind of the north end of this illustration in the red dot. And because Clear Creek Crossing is at the end of a service line, accommodations are needed to appropriately serve RTD and the Wheat Ridge community. This will create a truly multimodal development and more comprehensively meet the intent of the original zoning, inclusive of design oriented towards vehicles, bikes, pedestrian, trail users, and transit users. A bus transfer station is being designed along the eastern edge of Planning Area 6, shown kind of further left on the screen. And once the transfer station is complete, RTD has committed to reinstating additional bus service to the west side of the city, such as Routes 28 and 32. The red dots on this slide show the locations of the bus stop and the future transit station. In addition to, here we go. In addition to the original requirement that Planning Areas 1, 3, and 6 provide plaza gathering areas in the amount of at least 5,000 square feet, they're adding a new requirement for an additional 10,000 square feet of plaza area for Planning Area 6 to further augment the relocated restaurant and entertainment district within Clear Creek Crossing and integrate with the west side trail. Then the subordinate changes, more cleanups, include the proposal to dissolve the ACC. The master developer, Evergreen, who is the applicant on this proposal, is requesting to dissolve the Architectural Control Committee, which is that third-party review that contains both city and developer folks. Since we're getting to full build-out at the application, it's kind of creating an extra-layer process and some confusion for applicant teams. The city's standard review part, process in partnership with Evergreen is actually working quite well and would remain in place for all future development. So there's no precedent for any sort of Architectural Control Committee in Wheat Ridge, and with that staff that supports that dissolving of the ACC. Sign standards, so there's references to recently adopted the Lutheran Master Sign Plan, which allows all those freestanding signs kind of out in the hospital campus, which supersede the Design Pattern Book for sign standards. So just adding that cleanup note in there. Lighting standards are proposed to, the minimums are proposed to decrease based on feedback that we've been getting from adjacent property owners to decrease lumen levels and to match up with current best, best practice, because they were quite high, actually. The document also looks a little bit different than the original because it needed to be reformatted to be more user-friendly, but content besides what I presented tonight will remain the same. In terms of process, the request required a neighborhood meeting, and that took place in January of 2024. There were 10 members of the public in attendance. The application was sent on referral. The application was sent on referral to outside districts, and there were no concerns relayed. And before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days and letters were sent to property owners and residents within a one-thousand-foot radius. And the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. We did not receive any comments in advance of this meeting. And then Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to City Council on this item, who will be the final decision-maker on the request. I apologize there's an error on this slide, but staff finds that the O D P has no adverse impacts. All utility districts can serve the property. The amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and purpose of the original zoning and also that it is appropriate to mend the zoning to recognize market realities while enhancing the public realm. So ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request, case number W Z twenty-four oh one. And the applicant does have a presentation. Going to be a long meeting, sorry.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Can you give your name?
Yes.
And address, please.
My name is Derek Liss, and my address is three-two-five-two Trenton Street, Denver, Colorado, eight oh-two-three-eight.
Thank you.
So Stephanie did a great job outlining everything. I will try not to duplicate it. There's some of it that's redundant, but in the interest of time, we'll cut it down as much as possible. So thank you for the opportunity to share Evergreen Devco's application for amendments to the overall development plan and design pattern book for Clear Creek Crossing. This amendment is focused on Planning Area Three and Planning Area Six and the main connection between the two, which is Crossing Drive. My name is Derek Liss. I'm a Senior Development Manager with Evergreen Devco and the Development Director for Longspreek Metro District, Metropolitan District. Both Evergreen and the city of Wheat Ridge have worked together in partnership since two thousand sixteen to deliver Clear Creek Crossing as it is today, one hundred and ten acre mixed-use development. The overall project required significant public infrastructure, including new I seventy ramps, as well as the flyover bridge at Thirty-second. We've imported more than half a million cubic yards of soil and constructed significant improvements, infrastructure west of I seventy. So a longstanding vacant site is now a viable mixed-use planned community. Just some background on Evergreen. It was founded fifty years ago this year. Since then, we've developed over seven hundred projects. We currently have offices in California, Arizona, Utah, and in Denver. We started out as a retail developer and expanded into multifamily and then most recently into industrial. So we really set ourselves apart from competitors as being one of the top developers in horizontal mixed-use development. And Clear Creek Crossing is a good example of that with the multifamily development we've done along with the retail. All right, so this is a current aerial of the site. We've made significant progress. This is from November first. So now we have anchor users that are open for business. Most recently, the Intermountain Health Hospital Campus on the northeast portion of the site. And then we've got our two multifamily projects on the northwest corner of the site. And on the southwest portion of the site is Lifetime Fitness. That has been a huge success this year. So with all of those being open, you can see the kind of middle-third of the development is primed for now the retail infill that we really have been wanting and focused on for a long time and needed these anchors to get in place. Let's see. So with the anchors now established, we're very excited to break ground and deliver the restaurant and entertainment hub that Stephanie had mentioned. We're calling it the Lookout. Our multifamily developments are called the Outlook. So the retail is kind of the inverse of that, and it also faces west towards Lookout Mountain. So that's where that name came from. It overlooks Coors Pond. It's going to be a really fantastic community gathering spot. But originally, we contemplated this restaurant hub on P A Three, the Vineyard District, which is shown in purple. On this map, it's a little hard to see, but on the, up against I seventy and really that corner of Fortieth and Clear Creek Drive. However, due to market conditions and lessons learned in the retail world during the COVID pandemic, we are proposing to move this restaurant and entertainment hub to the west, to P A Six. This modification allows for the hub to connect to the Prospect Park Regional Trail, so members of the neighborhood can frequent the Lookout by vehicle, by bike or e-bike, or by foot. So really excited about all the ways that you can get to this restaurant district. And then, once you're there, stay and enjoy the view to the west. This slide is now honing in on P A Three and P A Six and Crossing Drive, which is the main crux of this amendment that we're trying to get through. The original O D P only allows drive-through windows that are attached to multi-tenant buildings in P A Three. The users that we have are wanting to be standalone drive-through uses. And a lot of restaurants now that maybe previously didn't have drive-throughs now require them. We're proposing to change out the allowed, the total number, as Stephanie mentioned. So in exchange for allowing drive-through uses in P A Three, we are proposing to limit the number of overall drive-through in Clear Creek Crossing to five total in these two planning areas. By moving the main retail and entertainment hub from Planning Area Three to Planning Area Six, it makes critically important the connectivity and how people get from the hospital all the way down to the Lookout. So that's where the enhancements to Crossing Drive have come in. Our objective is to design this thoroughfare with pedestrians in mind first and secondary users being vehicles. So it's not meant to be a cut-through route. Main vehicular traffic should stay on Clear Creek Drive and Fortieth Avenue. There will be traffic that goes through there, but it's intended to serve these uses. So, but the raised intersection that's denoted here as number one, that should be a main traffic calming device that'll slow traffic going through there. And then on the west side, we've got the large walkway that we're terming the paseo that'll really provide a nice connection between the hospital and the Lookout. So this slide does a good job of showing what we're proposing on Crossing Drive. So it's a repeating pattern of colored concrete and banding, twenty-foot wide sidewalks with at least twelve-foot clear sidewalk paths between the tree grates or the benches or bike block zone or the, and the edge of the sidewalk. Everywhere else in the project, we've got six-foot detached sidewalks. So this will be quite an impact and quite a large walkway compared to everywhere else. And then the raised intersection and enhanced crosswalks will provide easy and safe access to all adjacent businesses. And then the overhead lighting provides a unique nighttime experience. So this slide is displaying a rendering of the proposed raised intersection, which is not only elevated from the adjacent roadway, but is also different material, switching from asphalt in the roadway to a concrete in the intersection, which then allows the decorative thermoplastic crosswalks to see even more enhancements to the pedestrian user. And let's see. So in addition to the enhancements proposed on Crossing Drive, some other proposed changes to the O D P. Stephanie went over all of these in great detail, so I won't go in anymore unless there's any questions on any of them. But that should wrap up our presentation. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you. Now I'll do what I was supposed to do the first time and open the hearing for public comment. I won't go over how to do it. I think we painfully became aware of that in the first case. Is there anyone that has signed up to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
There might be one person if you wish to speak on this case, have any comments, please raise your hand. Nobody at this time.
All right, thank you. I will now close the citizens forum. I'll now entertain questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Moore.
No questions.
Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two questions slash comments. They're only going to be five, drive-through type, build, restaurant kind of things, right? And you mentioned the traffic control measures around where we're going to have that daycare. And I think that's really good, good planning. The, but I see no pictures of when it's going to be cold and snowy. This is all green and summery and happy. I'm just kidding. Thank you.
Commissioner Shelkey.
No questions.
Commissioner Kearns.
No questions.
Commissioner Quinones.
No questions.
Commissioner Gravy.
No questions. Appreciate the detailed presentation by both staff and the developer. Very exciting. Looks great. Thank you.
I have no questions. If we have no other questions, then I'll close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve.
We have the motion as amended.
Oh.
Sorry, I had to find it. I move to recommend approval of the case W Z twenty-four oh one, a request for approval of an amendment to the underlying zoning to revise uses and standards impacting Planning Areas Three and Six at Clear Creek Crossing for the following reasons. Number one, the zoning promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the community and will not result in a significant adverse effect on the surrounding area. Number two, the change in uses and standards does not affect the demand on public infrastructure. Number three, the amendment is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and purpose of underlying zoning. Number four, it is appropriate to amend the zoning standards to recognize market realities while enhancing the public realm.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, I would be more than happy to second Commissioner Kearns's motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Any discussion on the motion? All right, commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
And now, I will open the hearing for, for the session for case number W Z dash twenty-three dash eleven.
Case number W Z dash twenty-three dash eleven, Home Two at Clear Creek Crossing, approval of a specified development plan, S P D, for a Home Two Suites Hotel. Case number W Z twenty-three eleven is an application for approval of a specific development plan, S P D, for the purpose of developing a one-hundred-and-one, sorry, one-hundred-and-one, two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-square-foot four-story hotel containing one-hundred-and-nineteen guest rooms. The subject site is located on the east side of Clear Creek Drive and south of West Fortieth Avenue and Clear Creek Drive intersection within the Clear Creek Crossing Plan Development, known as Plan Area Three of Clear Creek Crossing. It is part of Lot One, Block Two, Clear Creek Crossing Retail Subdivision, which is behind, or sorry, which is being re-subdivided from one lot into three lots concurrently with this S P D, S D P.
Thank you, Commissioner Moore. May I have a staff report?
And I'm back. The slew of Clear Creek Crossing begins. So for the record, I'm Stephanie Stevens, Planner and Community Development Department at the city of Wheat Ridge, presenting case number W Z twenty-three eleven, which is a request for approval of a specific development plan for the construction of a hotel at the southeast corner of Fortieth Avenue and Clear Creek Drive in the Clear Creek Crossing Mixed Use Development. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, Planning Commission has jurisdiction to hear this case. The subject site is located at the southeast corner of Fortieth and Clear Creek Drive within Planning Area Three of Clear Creek Crossing. The site is currently vacant, and to the north across West Fortieth Avenue is the newly constructed Intermountain Health Lutheran Hospital and Medical Office Building. To the west is a Hampton Inn Hotel under construction, and there are applications in for review for a Bonfire Burritos Drive-Thru Restaurant, Primrose School, and the Lookout Restaurant Corridor. There are also applications in for review for a Bird Call Drive-Thru Restaurant in Bank of America on the vacant sites to the east. And Crossing Drive is planned to border the site directly along the east to be developed concurrently with Home Two site. The lot is south, to the southeast, is one of the few vacant parcels left. The subject site is located within the Clear Creek Crossing Plan Mixed Use Development, Planning Area Three, which is also called the Vineyard District, and a commercial sub-district in the development. The site is surrounded by Clear Creek Crossing development on all sides. Plan development process again. This is the second step in the two-phase, two-part approval process, first step occurring in two thousand eighteen and being amended before you tonight. The zone change also included approval of a vision book and design pattern book to establish the intended design and architectural themes and includes the more substantive development regulations. And the Architectural Control Committee that we talked about earlier is required to approve this project since the O D P has not yet moved forward or has not yet been approved yet. So the A C C did review this and provided their recommendation of approval. Planning Commission is also reviewing case number W Z twenty-four oh one, which is the O D P amendment we talked about earlier tonight. And the location of Home Two was originally conceived as that restaurant-retail district proposed to be relocated. So the hotel is a complementary use to the hospital and feels warranted. It's within walking distance. And the Home Two S C P relies on these couple things on the screen of the O D P that's being amended tonight, including that Build Two requirement and modifying the permitted locations for parking at that hard corner. The applicant is requesting to build a four-story hotel that is one-hundred-and-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifteen-square-feet with one-hundred-and-nineteen guest rooms. Hotels are permitted uses in the Vineyard District or Planning Area Three. And now I'll walk through the proposed conditions of the site in the next few slides, but this also takes into consideration adequate vehicular access, planning area connectivity, and pedestrian connections, and includes two corner plazas. So starting with access, shown in the red arrows on the screen, the vacant two-point-three-two-acre site is proposed to be developed with the hotel. And shown in the star on the screen is the, this actual site location. Crossing, there will be one access point from Crossing Drive that then feeds into the three adjacent signalized intersections. And the private drive to the east that will serve those future developments will also align with this Home Two access to provide further planning area connectivity. So here is the specific development plan with some areas highlighted for you to be able to differentiate some things. The building is located along, kind of fronting that West Fortieth Avenue. So you can see in this one like how that Build Two kind of forces those buildings up close to the street. One access point is proposed, shown with the red arrow, and the S C P reflects one-hundred-and-seventeen proposed parking spaces to be screened by the to be screened by the building and by landscaping. And the parking area also includes sidewalks shown with the blue arrows on this slide, allowing pedestrians to access from basically kind of all sides of the, um, of the streets. The Design Pattern Book establishes setback in building orientation requirements as well. For Planning Area Three within the Vineyard District, there's the Build Two along Fortieth Avenue, proposed to be amended, but in this case, it was, it is, so that dash line that's called out as the Build Two, that shows you what fifty feet looks like from the property line. The building would meet, the fifty-five percent of the building basically is within that Build Two. And there's also that current prohibition for parking at the hard corner. So, that would, um, impact this, but the parking is proposed to be screened. The project exceeds the minimum required twenty percent open space or landscaping. Shown in green on the slide, it includes perimeter landscaping, corner plazas, parking lot landscaping islands, streetscape trees, and planting beds near the building, most of water-wise varieties. A lower retaining wall and exposed foundation with architectural treatment are proposed on the north side of the building, with a wall that kind of extends a little bit to the east transitioning to the stairs, so that blue arrow in the northeast corner is where there's stair access down to Fortieth Avenue. Home Two is providing two plaza spaces, one at the Clear Creek Drive and Fortieth Avenue intersection, and the other at the Clear Creek Drive and Crossing Drive intersection fulfilling the Planning Area Three Plaza requirement. Elevations and perspectives, the architectural style is driven by the Design Pattern Book. They also have physical material boards here, if you want to see what it looks like in person. It requires strong attention to be paid to the pedestrian realm. The building is proposed to be four stories and approximately fifty-six feet tall, and architecture is comprised of primarily stone, fiber cement, glazing or windows, and epithers with metal and wood accents. The materials carry over to all four sides of the building. This slide shows the south elevation and main entry, and the building contains stone and wood-based elements to enhance the pedestrian realm in awnings with wooden corbels kind of at that top portion and also on the portico chair, where will be the main entry, um, with wood and enhanced enhancements to accentuate that modern agrarian theme. This is a view of the building from the southwest, also showing just how the materials carry over to all four sides. And this is the north elevation, so what you'd see from Fortieth Avenue shows the similar stone elements and wood elements. We worked on improving this view from Fortieth Avenue as it was, um, it's technically back-of-house for them. It will not be the primary entry, although you can gain access from the south, from the north side. Overall facade transparency on the street-facing facades also meet requirements of the Design Pattern Book. And this is what will be seen from Crossing Drive northeast to the site. This rendering shows that grade change and that gradual increase on the, for this, well, closest to Crossing Drive. Process-wise, since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water, and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive objections from outside agencies, and coordination with these districts is ongoing. Civil construction documents are nearing approval, and a plat is under review for the entire Block Two area to establish lots for these couple of users that are coming in. And a recommended condition of approval has been added to denote that minor changes may be required to the SDP that you're looking at tonight to coordinate the development with the surrounding infrastructure that's also being reviewed. Before the hearing, the property was posted for fifteen days, and letters were sent to property owners within a one-thousand-foot radius. And the project was posted to Wheat Ridge Speaks. We did not receive any comments in advance of this meeting. And with this, staff finds that the SDP is consistent with the ODP and is in compliance with that Design Pattern Book. The SDP is consistent with the purpose of a plan development in general, and all agencies can serve the property, therefore, staff is recommending approval with conditions as listed in your staff report. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant would like to give one as well.
Can I get your first and spelling of your last name and address, please?
Good evening. Jennifer Tedrick. Address, five forty-five East John Carpenter Parkway, Irving, Texas. Good evening, Commissioner.
Can you spell your last name for me?
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Tedrick, T-E-D, or I-C-K.
Thank you.
Good evening. I want to start off by thanking staff for their time. It truly has been a collaborative effort in working through this SDP process, so want to take, thank them for their time and effort, and, and just note that it's really been a collaborative effort working with them on this project. So, before we get into the proposed hotel, I want to share with you a bit about Highgate, who's the developer-owner of this proposed hotel. Uh, Highgate's not just an owner of hotels. Highgate is an industry-leading hotel management, investment, technology, and development firm. Uh, Highgate has a diverse portfolio of hotels across many states in the U.S. and across countries across the globe. What makes Highgate different is our leadership and staff have decades of experience in the hotel industry with expertise in major markets. Highgate has almost five hundred properties in its portfolio ranging from economy, luxury, and resort hotels. Highgate's core business focuses in three areas: management, development, and investment. We have achieved great success in the hotel management services area, making, making us the largest U.S. operator of full-service independent hotels in the U.S. We have active operational presence in every major market across the country. Um, here you can see just a bit where we have a few of our full-service and select service hotels in the U.S. This just gives you a full spectrum of the type of hotels that we have. We've received high coveted editorial features and awards for hotels, and this just covers a few of those awards. Uh, now, now that you know a bit about Highgate and who we are, I want to share with you what Highgate, what we're going to be bringing to Wheat Ridge with our newest asset in the Clear Creek Development with the Home Two Suite by Hilton. Home Two Suite is a dynamic and savvy hotel brand designed to make guests feel at home regardless of their length of stay. Our forward-thinking design strikes a perfect balance of modern and playful while at the same time remaining functional and comfortable. Home Two Suites first launched in two thousand nine. Since then, Home Two Suites has gained much success, and customer demand has grown. There are now over five hundred and sixty Home Two Suites with many more in the pipeline. Uh, Home Two Suite is the fastest-growing Hilton brand and is the fastest-growing hotel in the U.S. Um, in the last ten-plus years, Home Two Suites has been the fastest-growing brand in Hilton's history with hotels in the U.S., Canada, and China. Got a little ahead of myself, I apologize. Let me go back. The reason Home Two Suite has, has had much success is due to the guests. Uh, Home Two Suites guests prioritize value and want to stay in a modern and comfortable hotel that will accommodate their lifestyle and needs. Our guests are active, enjoy experiencing local communities, prioritize wellness during travel, and look for healthy dining and exercise options. This makes the Home Two Suite site here in the Clear Creek Crossing in Wheat Ridge the perfect partners. Throughout the Home Two Suite design, you will see how we combine, oh, I apologize, this is a bit out of order. There we go. Throughout the Home Two Suite design, you'll see how we combine function and style, and this is visible in our public spaces that we offer, um, areas for gathering, relaxation, to fitness and business. The design of these spaces provides our guests many of the amenities that make them feel at home, but are efficiently laid out. When you enter a Home Two Suite, you are greeted by an open community space where our guests can socialize and connect. A business center is available to provide our guests a space for printing and recharging. An open retail area of various items is located adjacent to the front desk. Another added amenity is the spin-to-cycle area. This is a laundry and gym combo area, allowing our guests to be productive by giving them a space to exercise and wash. An amenity that is popular with the kids and the kids at heart that visit our Home Two Suites is, um, is our environmentally-conscious, uh, pool that is chlorine-free and is maintained with natural minerals. This pool is located indoors to be joined year-round. Outdoor areas are also available to our guests, featuring grills and comfortable outdoor lounge areas with fire pits. Uh, the Home Two Suites here in Wheat Ridge will consist of one hundred and nineteen rooms. Our rooms will feature a working wall, kitchen, bathroom, working and media area, and storage. Uh, rooms will be available in single beds or two beds. Uh, the purpose of the design is to provide our guests the same features typically found in a home so that our guests feel comfortable regardless of the number of stays in our hotels. Uh, here is a typical studio suite that may be ideal for single travelers. Our bedroom suites, our one-bedroom suites, will come with all the same amenities, but a bit larger, making this space ideal for couples or families. As I mentioned, all rooms will feature a working wall that are designed around the guests' needs. Uh, this cleverly-designed work area includes ample counter space and storage. Uh, this area allows a, this area allows a large space to accommodate a live-work-life balance many of our guests are seeking. Each guest room will also feature a small kitchen that includes a small sink, fridge, and microwave. Uh, this feature tends to be a bonus for our guests. This gives them the flexibility and amenities that they find in their home. Another important feature all our guests, in all our guest rooms, is the bathroom with a walk-in shower, a low-flow sink faucets, water-conserving toilets, and sleek cabinetry. Uh, Home Two Suites is pet and planet-approved. Uh, we strive to accommodate our two-legged and four-legged guests while making sure we are doing our part for the planet. Uh, Home Two Suites has found that pet-friendlyness is key demand generator, so we feel the need to make this a priority, so all Home Two Suites, or this particular Home Two Suites, will allow for pets. Um, at Highgate, we strive to be environmentally aware, making Home Two Suites a perfect fit in our portfolio. Uh, this hotel is designed with the planet in the forefront with efficient, with eco-friendly building, recycling stations, uh, providing glassware and flatware instead of plastic, and, uh, water-reducing appliances. A new feature that is being implemented in all Home Two Suites is the EV charging stations, which will also be available at the Wheat Ridge site. Um, as for the exterior design of the Home Two Suites in Wheat Ridge, it will feature an agrarian theme that is in line with the Clear Creek Crossing development, the ODP that you heard, um, earlier today. Uh, the building exterior incorporates various materials that will create a unique architectural design that will enhance the overall development and, uh, complement the natural environment. Uh, the top two images here show the perspective of the primary entrance, which is emphasized by the portico chair made of timber and stone base where guests will drive up or walk up to. Uh, the bottom two images are the perspective from Fortieth Avenue that serves as a primary frontage of the property. This is the enclosed pool area and outdoor patio space. Uh, this section of the building has a lower building height with the main hotel portion of the building stepped back from the public street to create a comfortable, walkable experience for the pedestrian at the sidewalk level. In these images here, um, these are the interior of a few Home Two Suites across the country. Just want to give you a, a view of, of the modern design so our guests have a, again, a relaxing place to gather and rest. These are just a few examples of a few Home Two Suites across the country. Um, I hope this information conveys that Highgate, we strive to inspire greatness in everything that we do. Uh, we're passionate, passionately obsessed with excellence and putting people first. Uh, we believe the Home Two Suites by Hilton embodies the same values and by providing the design that it prioritizes our guests' needs and demands, uh, but also is a positive asset to the community. Uh, thank you for your consideration on this item. We look forward to being a part of the community of Wheat Ridge. Um, I'm available for questions, and we have a few of our team members here as well. Thank you.
I will now open the hearing for public comments, and I do have three names on this list. Jeff White and Casey John. Are you with the applicant? Do you want to speak in support of the project?
He's available for questions if we have any.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, nobody on Zoom.
Okay, great. I'll now entertain, I'm going to close the forum since we don't have any citizens speaking, and I'll entertain questions from commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Shelkey.
Uh, I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Quinn.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, everyone, for all of the, the presentations. I, obviously, there's a demand for this. You wouldn't be sinking this kind of money into, into this development, but I'm just, I'm just curious how, and it probably has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight, but how we, you came to want to build this here since we got the Hampton Suites across the way. Um, there's several up and down I-70. We won't get into all of that. But also, a little bit further down, I-70 is a Marriott. And I'm just, what I hate to see is we build something and it's half-used, two-thirds of the year. Uh, I guess that's just a comment more than a question, so. Thank you. And you can, if you want to say, "Be quiet, Quinn," um, that's fine, too.
I, I won't say that. But I'll just say, I mean, we definitely have a team that looks at what you're speaking to, and obviously, as you saw in the previous, um, presentation in the ODP, there's a lot of growth happening within this particular development. So, we wouldn't be building if there, we don't believe that there will be a demand. And the Home Two Suites just provides a unique, um, hotel experience for guests that they're looking for, and, and we truly believe that this will be a success, and we will be an asset to the Clear Creek Crossing development.
Commissioner Moore.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Gravy.
I just, little follow-up to Patrick's for staff. Is the Hampton a similar-sized hotel? Do we know, or are they both like similar-sized in terms of rooms?
Pretty much similar size, yeah, but they have a different, like, layout, floor plan and all that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks. That's all.
Commissioner Quinones?
No questions.
Commissioner Kearns?
Yeah, is the, is this large sidewalk on the east side of the hotel, is that considered the Paseo? Is that what we were talking about?
Yes, it is directly reflective of that design.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions from the commissioners? All right, I will close the public hearing. I will now entertain a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to approve case number WZ twenty-three eleven, a request for approval of a specific development plan for a Home Two Hotel on property located within Planning Area Three of the Clear Creek Crossing Planed Mixed Use Development on the southeast corner of West Fortieth Avenue and Clear Creek Drive for the following reasons. The specific development plan is consistent with the purpose of a plan development as stated in Section twenty-six dash three oh one of the Code of Laws. The specific development plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the outlined development plan. The proposed uses are consistent with the approval, or, excuse me, with those approved by the outlined development plan. All responding agencies have indicated that they can serve the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense. The specific development plan is in substantial compliance with the applicable standards set forth in the outlined development plan and with the city's adopted design materials with the following conditions. Approval of the SPD, SDP is contingent upon City Council's approval of the ODP Amendment Case Number WZ dash twenty-four dash zero one. Minor site adjustments may be required to the civil construction plans to coordinate this development with surrounding infrastructure improvements. this development with surrounding infrastructure improvements and the replat. The associated subdivision plat case number MS-24-01 shall be recorded prior to the recording of the subject SDP. The developer shall entertain into a development agreement with the city to be recorded with the county clerk and recorder prior to issuance of the building permits. Building permit submittals shall be consistent with the SDP.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the Commissioners? Nope. Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much for coming to the meeting tonight. Next on our agenda is old business.
No old business, excuse me, no old business, Madam Chair?
Any new business.
We have upcoming dates. We have now gotten our schedule in order, and we will have a meeting on December 19th. Apologies that that is close to the Christmas week, so do let us know if you're not going to be able to attend. However, we will not have a meeting on December 5th, so you're off that night. I don't have any project and development updates to speak of, although just a reminder to, you can always check the projects and properties, Matt, for both private and public projects within the city. It's updated weekly. Thank you.
Any updates from Commissioner?
Madam Chair, not necessarily an update, but I do want to acknowledge and the, the public that was here tonight that spoke and testified, and also thank them on Zoom. Zoom appreciates the public's input on all the matters and their time and passion about zoning and planning.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Commissioners, please vote.
Motion approved, seven to zero.